Okay, so we have just exited the executive session and we are resuming our work session. And we're on to bond updates. Do we have anything?
Yeah, we're going on tour.
Excellent.
Oh, Dave and Natalie, but I don't know if you want them. But in the little baggie that has not touched anything else, it does have butter in it. So that makes it not vegan, but it's gluten free and close to vegan. And no peanuts also.
Well, thank you.
It was really good.
I can do a little bit. It's mostly just like just moderator.
Or any, any thoughts?
May I ask a question about the Promethean boards versus these? Because it seems like we went from an interactive board to just a projector to back to an interactive board. What's the, what's, what's this got that the old one didn't?
Were you in the room?
I, well, I got what this one's got, but I'm thinking back to the Promethean. Obviously the speakers, the quality of the images, you know, 10 times, 10 times thousand.
That's the thing. These projectors are, are so outdated and the thing with projectors is that they don't just turn off one day and they're like, I'm done. It's this slow death, you know? So the whole district, there's 200, 280 slowly dying and pretty much almost dead projectors. So when we put these displays in people's rooms, all of a sudden every kid is engaged from no matter where they're sitting. They can hear the sound clearly. Not every classroom has speakers, probably like half of them do. And they were purchased randomly by somebody so they don't plug into all the stuff. It is an absolute mess to try to, like we do trainings at schools. It's not standard. And so whoever gets put in that classroom that has got the weird setup, they have to call us. We have to come down there, they lose five minutes of their meeting. But we'll apply that across all the buildings. But, but to your, to your question, the big difference is that it's a clear display and the sound is there. Then yeah, you can actually touch it and that's super engaging for kids when they're ringing them up and doing things like that. Like moving their names across, just that one little activity will get a kid to read a chapter in a book, you know? One thing that she doesn't do yet, you saw was connect wirelessly. And we have our other pilot people connecting wirelessly. Kelsey Hart is a really good one at Tap 712 because she will connect with her iPad. And then she does math on the iPad from wherever she wants in the room and it's up on the board. And then she has figured out.
She's checking with students and maintaining discipline and so on.
And not only that, but she'll place the iPad on a kid's desk and give him a pen and they can write.
Yeah, for sure.
If some Janice Spencer do that too.
Yeah, yeah, I do too.
Yeah, the mobile aspect is awesome.
Yeah, yeah. What's, what's the timeline for rollout?
Good question. I have to make sure, I have things I'm going to tell you about in there too.
Okay.
But.
I don't, I don't want to.
The timeline is, we, we think we may be able to purchase them sooner than before because our installers are going to allow us to warehouse as long as we want. Uh, not here. So, because we didn't have the room for 300 giant boxes, so.
In every classroom, we have 300?
We're going to get 300 displays and we have 279 classrooms. Uh, so media centers are another 11 and then we have hot swap devices which are, we put them in places like my Lisa's office, for instance, where if we need one right away for the school, we can just grab that one off the wall, install it and then take theirs back to our department to fix. So each area will have hot swap devices.
And what's the resilience of the screens?
They're amazing. One, one of our salespeople on one of the earlier models, I haven't had the courage to do it on one of our brand new ones, but this guy was pounding on the screen as hard as he could.
I was going to ask because that's, that's going to happen whether inadvertently or on purpose.
Yeah, they're very durable. They have 10 year life.
Wow.
We try to go minimal on the, the attachments on the inside of it. So that we don't, we're, we don't have to throw the whole TV away when those things fail, you know? Because that's, that's a shorter life cycle. So that display you just saw in there has an Android brain inside of it, but that's it. There's no like PC or Mac inside of it.
Okay.
So the teachers have a device. That's the brain they're using when they teach, whether they're mobile or they're plugged into it.
Okay.
And if they wanted to, they can use the whiteboard like Debbie was showing. And there's a couple of different apps you can do. Google is one of those where you can have that all just on the board by itself. I, I do want to talk about a couple of the barriers that have come up that I think we have solutions for. One of them is what do you do when a sub comes in the room? We, we have to align, I've talked to my Lisa, my Lisa about this before, but we have to align the district on what the expectation is for a sub. When they come in the room with technology. It is super unrealistic to think that they're going to be able to touch everything, open up Google Docs, like do Google Classroom. Not only because they don't have training on it and know how to do it, but there is a cybersecurity concern. These things are actual computers that people are signing into. So yeah, I don't know if you saw, but she got her iPad and scanned the QR code.
Yeah.
I thought that was pretty seamless myself. They have an iPad, they scan it, they're in, you do that once a day. There was no, she talked about her phone, but there's, there's a disconnect there. Like you don't need to use your phone, you just, you just zap it.
Two-step verification.
Exactly. It's her iPad, it's her screen, she just pops it like this. Um, the subs won't have that. They won't be expected to do that. They have a computer like this, maybe someone left them a file to display or a YouTube video. They just plug in with the wire and it works. There's no, there's no signing in or anything. It's, it's all on the device. So I think that is how we're going to solve the problem with subs and with guests and rooms. One of, one of the solutions is not to compromise our cybersecurity or struggle to train them. Um, I wrote down a couple of other areas. How much time do I have?
Uh, well, we have about five more minutes and just because of the, you'll be fine with time in the board meeting. But if you want to just cover any of these bond updates with them while they're here before, that, that way there's about 10 minute break and then the board meeting will start and you can finish the interactive part.
Okay, cool. Uh, okay, so bond updates. I just talked about interactive displays. The network closets, um, that was a, that was just a construction project, basically. Like we needed to take some of them and separate them from the janitor closet. Uh, or in some cases we had to open it up more, enclose it, put in ventilation, stuff like that. So we are almost done with that. All the schools have had their major upgrades done. We do need to go back though and figure out locks because the locks have to be a two factor lock. So that there, uh, there's a key and a keypad or a different way to get in the room besides just the, just the key. Uh, we've got a plan with Rich to do that.
And that's, that's standard cybersecurity.
It is, yeah. And also they're, how they're doing, they're doing the camera work, so they are going to be able to see who's going in and out of rooms. The batteries we're buying have sensors on them so we can sense when someone comes in the room, it logs it or alerts us. Uh, they also has temperature and moisture sensors and things like that, so we can keep all that equipment really safe and lasting a long time. We need to label all the outside of the closets too, that's not done, so we're working with Rich on that. But when those things are done, they're, they're going to be awesome closets. I don't know, Susan, have you shared that picture yet of the network closet?
No.
That's not public yet?
No, it's in that Minnesota.
Okay, uh, yeah, take a look at that picture and if you want to see the before picture, uh, I'll, I'll show you. Or you can go and look in the schools, um, switch closets because they all look like this, but it is a mess. So we've got the one at the TLC building done and it is, it is something to look at. I mean, like every wire is perfect, perfectly routed. And it's not just because we're obsessed with that perfection, but like now when something breaks, it is so much easier for us to go and fix it. Uh, so when we have the whole district like that, we're going to be out of a job.
I, I remember the, the closet in Toledo High School.
It's, it's the same or worse.
Yeah, wires just.
Yes.
We wouldn't be able to track that.
No. So on cameras, um, we, we are completely done with TLCO building. Crestview is done, Waldport High School is done and Ocean Lake is, has like one or two cameras left to go in. Um, all the staff have, or the teachers have been, I'm sorry, the administrators have been trained in those schools and they are using the new system, which is so cool. Um, SAMCASE was our first school to start in to experiment with, so they're about half done. And Josh told me that they want to finish Newport next, so it would be SAMCASE, Newport Middle and then YB. We're kind of subject to the facilities department and how they want to move through the district on this. So it's what we want to do, but we'll find out from Rich if that's going to happen or not. The intercom work, we're, we're helping them with this. It's more of their project, but SAMCASE, Tapped Elementary, Ocean Lake and Toledo High School are done as far as technology goes. Meaning we've, we've established an IDF, put in a switch and then configured the ports for them to come and run the wires and plug their intercoms into it. Blue boxes, same thing, SAMCASE, Tapped Elementary is done and I think that they want to go to Toledo Elementary next. So they're working on that. And then with, uh, the, the VoIP phones, they finished Toledo High School. Ocean Lake, Toledo Elementary and Tapped High School are next, same situation. We have to go and make sure there's a switch with a bank of ports and then configure those ports to work with phones. And then Smeed comes in to install stuff and configure the other side of it.
And Smeed's the company that does it.
They are, yeah. Yeah, so those things are all in the works. You guys have questions?
Seems like it's rolling out really fast.
That's what I said to Josh today and he's like, no, we're not going fast enough.
Sounds like Rich too and I'm like.
I know, I don't know why they did that, but it's incredible amount of work.
This is just the third month, fourth month of the school year.
Yeah, they're flying.
Those guys get up in the morning and they're just like, I get to work.
They are.
Yeah.
Sunday text from Rich, every Sunday I have an update where he's been driving and checking.
Yep.
Well, thank you. And then we'll continue on the.
Sure, yep.
When you get your pitch for money.
Okay, so, any, anything else, any other questions for, for Brian at this, at this point?
I think that's everything. All right, great.
Okay, thank you so much. And, uh, that will wrap up our work session, yeah? I really appreciate seeing her in her classroom.
Yeah, that was awesome. It was fun one.
Yeah, really did it. Okay, so we are adjourned for the work session and we've got 10 minutes to get down to the gym.
Record.
In this hallway.
10 minutes!
It's enough time to.